All right, thank you guys for coming. I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is the annual reorganizational meeting of the Board of Education. I have already administered the oath of faithful performance in office to new board members Troy Anderson and Dwayne Bebo and re-elected board member Christopher Gadway. Could we all please stand for the pledge of allegiance to the general decision.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the religion and justice of our fathers.
All right, we're gonna do roll call now. Troy Anderson.
Present.
Padraig Bean.
Present.
Dwayne Bebo.
Present.
John Fairchild.
Present.
Christopher Gadway.
Aye.
Patty LaFlem.
Here.
Ed Maron. Richard Sears.
Here.
David Trudeau.
Here.
Next, we're gonna do the approval of the agenda. Resolved that the acting superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the agenda, can I get a motion, please?
Motion, Padraig.
Can I get a second?
Second, David.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carried. Next, we are going to elect our president and vice president of the Board of Education. Are there any nominations for the president of the Board of Education?
I'd like to nominate Ed Maron.
All second.
If, if he was interested, I'd like to nominate John.
Okay, one second, we're gonna start with that. So, Rick, you motion. Patty, you second.
Yep.
Okay. And are there any other nominations for president of the Board of Education?
If he was interested, I'd like to nominate John Fairchild.
I'd like in respect to the decline that I'm... step forward.
Are there any other nominations for the president for the Board of Education? Any other nominations? Okay, we're gonna do roll call. Troy Anderson.
Aye.
Padraig Bean.
Aye.
Dwayne Bebo.
Aye.
John Fairchild.
Yes.
Christopher Gadway.
Yes.
Patty LaFlem.
Yes.
Ed Maron. Richard Sears.
Yes.
David Trudeau.
Yes.
Ed has been elected as our board president. I will swear him in when he returns. So now we'll do the vice president. Are there any nominations for vice president of the Board of Education?
I'd like to nominate John Fairchild.
And can I get a second?
I would second that.
Are there any other nominations for vice president of the Board of Education?
I'd like to nominate Chris Gadway.
Can I get a second on that? All second. Are there any other nominations for the vice president of the Board of Education? All right, so now we'll do roll call. You'll just tell me who you would like to elect, okay? Troy Anderson.
Aye, John Fairchild.
Padraig Bean.
John Fairchild.
Dwayne Bebo.
John Fairchild.
John Fairchild.
Yes.
John Fairchild, I guess.
Christopher Gadway.
I'm gonna go with John also.
Patty LaFlem.
Oh, I'll go with Christopher Gadway.
Richard Sears.
John Fairchild.
And David Trudeau.
I'm gonna be the odd one out, but Chris.
So, John, you have been elected to be the vice president, so I just need to swear you in. Raise your right hand. I, John Fairchild, salutes and swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I respectfully discharge the duties of vice president of the Board of Education according to the best of my abilities. Good. I raise my hand. I'm gonna hand over the meeting to you.
That's unfair. That looked out perfect. Okay. Now we're with each other. Okay. Next is the resolution, resolved Board of Education appoint Ozzy Comer as the ex officio student board member effective July 1, 2023, ending on June 30, 2024. Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second, Padraig.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Appointment of officers clerk to the board. Resolved that the Board of Education appoint Chelsea McDonald to serve as a clerk to the Board of Education during the 2023-24 fiscal year at an annual salary of $2,870 with an indemnity amount of $100,000. Motion.
I'll motion it.
I'll second.
That was David. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Treasurer. Resolved that the Board of Education appoint Jennifer Stahl to serve as treasurer of this district during the 2023-24 fiscal year at an annual salary not less than $57,117.91 with an indemnity amount of $1 million. Motion.
I'll motion.
Aye. Second?
All second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolved that the Board of Education appoint Jennifer Parham to serve as a tax factor of this district during the 2023-24 fiscal year until the end of the hour. Motion.
I'll motion it.
Second? Dwayne? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Internal claims auditor. Resolved that the Board of Education appoint Lee Sarum to serve as the internal claims auditor of this district during the 2023-24 fiscal year at an hourly rate of $25 with an indemnity amount of $100,000. Motion. Motion, Rick? Thank you, Rick. Second?
Second, Padraig.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda. Resolved that the acting superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolutions on this consent agenda, other appointment of school attorneys, others purchasing agent, Clinton Essex Warren, Washington County Board of Walker of Education Services, not student physicals, insurance consultant of TSA, committee on special education, subcommittee on special education, committee on preschool education, any partial hearing officer and Medicaid compliance officer, be and are hereby approved. Motion. Opposed? All the... Patty first. Second, Chris. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Resolved that the acting superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolutions on this consent agenda, item designations, official bank deposit theory, all funds, official newspaper, investment of vital funds, Board of Education meeting dates, established mileage and engagement rate in school meal prices, be and are hereby approved. Motion. All motion. Chris, you second?
All second.
Aye, thank you. All those... Oh, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolved that the acting superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolution on this consent agenda, authorization to certify payrolls, conferences, conventions, workshops, attendance, to establish petty cash funds, designation of signatures on check, superintendent to apply for grants and aid, advances from general fund to other funds, budget transfers on chief school officers' approval, and use of checks signed device, be and are hereby approved. Motion.
I'll motion.
Thank you, David. Second?
All second.
Thank you, Rick. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolved that the acting superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolutions on this consent agenda, other items, regulated extra classroom activity fund, cooperative purchasing, participation in the following cooperative purchasing alliances, code of ethic, transportation, credit card authorization, association memberships, established temporary on-call rates, substitute site owners for athletic event site coordinator, correction of tax rolling, tax bills, cash reward, and policies, be and are hereby approved. Motion.
Motion.
Aye. Second?
All second.
Chris, thank you. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is that a given to the presentation?
Public comment.
Public comment. Anyone here for public comment?
Just gonna have to yell. You might have to turn off. Oh, our just... I could just yell. Shannon Bartlett, Five Hands Row. Welcome to the new members. Something I just wanted to bring up that I thought might be pertinent to tonight's introduction, I guess, is, I can't remember exactly, I was just trying to scroll through the board minutes, but the wifi wasn't great. But a few board meetings ago, Eric Bell had come here to present something about a food program, I believe it was Cornell Cooperative Extension that they had partnered with, and I bring it up as a community member simply because my little guy attended Beakman Town, and it's been a few minutes since he's been there, but when he was here, something that we had to track and follow for him was his diet, and so we kept a food journal, not just at home, but at school as well, and when I started getting the food journal every day, at the end of the day, started seeing what he took in for calories and carbs, we had a really good understanding of, or better understanding of his diet, and I started sending his own breakfast and lunch. Because he, TMI, suffered from some chronic constipation and some other things, and so we just really needed to pay attention to those things, but his intake for breakfast and lunch were pretty much carb-loaded. So, as a parent, someone who's really had to watch diet specifically for other reasons, I just think it's important that the new members have an opportunity. The only thing I can say is that I know there's a YouTube video, I think it's Plattsburgh City School District that has it out, but I think it's worth mentioning, it's something that should be considered or talked about again. I just know that how I function when I've only had a carb load, so, you know, I just think that everyone on the board should have an opportunity to take a peek at it and consider bringing it to meet them now. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. So now, I think we're moving on to the presentation by Dr. Davey in the area to the superintendent search.
Good evening. Vice President Fairchild, members of the Board of Education, and congratulations to your new board members, as well as your re-elected board members and the entire board. Thank you for allowing me to be here this evening on behalf of Champlin Educational Services. I want to also acknowledge your administrative team members here, your staff, as well as parents and many community members, and perhaps even some students who may be in attendance. Thank you for allowing me to come this evening to present an update and an overview on the superintendent search informational presentation. And for those of you in the audience, this presentation is also on your website. Okay, so it is available. So, this evening, as we begin, there's a presentation outline which basically outlines to start with the district superintendent assistants, my role as the district superintendent supporting not only our component districts, but also in my SED role. Second, we have planned to provide an interim superintendent posting and update, that the interim superintendent posting closes tomorrow, so we'll talk a little bit about that. There's also, the third item is the superintendent search overview about the process, the timeline, key talking points, and potential next steps, and the search suggestions for moving forward. So, let's begin, and if the board does have questions, please feel free to ask, and we can pause and move forward, or we can also answer any questions at the end. As the district superintendent for CVES, I have a joint appointment with Champlin Educational Services, officially known as Clinton Essex Warren Washington BOCs and the State Education Department. So I am also the CEO of CVES BOCs, but approximately a third of my salary is actually paid for by the State Education Department. And part of this responsibility to support school districts comes from both the BOCs responsibilities as well as my state education responsibilities. With that said, as the district superintendent, I work very closely with our component districts, with our chief school officers, we hold monthly meetings, as you're very likely aware, and work very closely with them throughout the year, and additionally, I also have the opportunity and pleasure to work with our boards of education. Annually, and just a few months ago, we came with your CD tech students and Mr. Friedman, they did an amazing job, and just a few, a month or so later, they, all of our CD tech graduates graduated at both Plattsburgh Fieldhouse, Stewie Plattsburgh Fieldhouse, and also at Mariah High School for our two campuses. Just outstanding, as well as our special education students as the Giltz Auditorium. As the district superintendent search responsibilities, my assistance to the board is, can everyone hear me okay with the... My responsibilities and support are provided at no charge. And I will pause for one quick minute and say, Mrs. Julie Jolker is here with me this evening. Board members who were participating in the previous meeting, she did join us, she is back this evening as well, and Mrs. Jolker is the confidential secretary to the district superintendent. She and her husband also are residents in your district and live in your district, but she's, has been with the district superintendent's office now for three years doing amazing work with me, and she's very pleased to be here this evening and join me in this presentation and also for afterwards. As my responsibilities, and I indicated, are provided at no charge, there are additional coser aided responsibilities, and for those board members or audience members, a coser stands for a cooperative service agreement. And a co-op, just very briefly, a cooperative service agreement, a coser, is actually an incentivized way that the state encourages school districts to work together. Beakman Town and this parliament, I believe you're around seventy, roughly seventy percent, receives state aid back on your BOCs expenses of approximately seventy cents on the dollar. So when you spend a dollar worth of services, the state aid comes back to the district the following year at about seventy percent. So, additional charges that are related to the search, advertisements, communication, and so on and so forth are all coser aidable, so you're incentivized to actually have shared services, but also then it comes back as part of your state aid payment the following year. Additionally, and I'll note, that the collaboration and working closely with boards of education is one of the responsibilities that I enjoy the most. Not only do I have the opportunity to work closely with the board, and we would spend quite a bit of time together, but most often I also have the chance to work with your search committees as well, which will involve various stakeholders, staff, administrators, and members of your district who are part of the search process that the board has invited to be part of. It's a great opportunity to work closely with the board and the district, to really support your district for moving forward in the leadership. And lastly, in the post-search responsibilities as a district superintendent, one of my main responsibilities is working closely with the new superintendent, your administrators, your board, and your district, to ensure that your district is successful going forward. And generally, it's something that not only do we have monthly meetings with our chief school officers, but many times we also have bi-monthly web access. During the pandemic, we met daily, weekly, and so on and so forth. So we work very closely to support our districts, and we look forward to strengthening that relationship with the Beakman Town School District. So now let's pause for a minute and talk a little bit about the superintendent, the interim superintendent search, which is underway. For the public attendees, the board has asked me as district superintendent to assist in searching for an interim superintendent. With that said, I appreciate the board's support and look forward to the opportunity to continue through this process with you. First and foremost, the advertisement has been underway for the last few weeks, and it officially closes tomorrow, Wednesday, July 12. Ads have appeared in the New York State School Boards Association online job placement website, they've been part on the Seine's website, that's the School Administrators Association of New York State, as well as locally in the Albany Times Union, in the Capital Region, also the Press Republican. The Albany Times Union package, and it actually was part of last week's distribution, and last Sunday, and several days before and after, it's also been part of the blitz that the Albany Times Union does through their social media network, very extensive. So, the advertisement has been on Indeed, on ZipRecruiter, on Glassdoor, on Facebook, on Instagram, after college, and university events. I recently had the opportunity, and it's also been sent out through my district superintendent colleagues and chief school officers, so all the district superintendents in New York State receive that information, I receive information from them, and when there are job openings, we pass them along to people to share and for our colleagues to share. With that said, I recently attended with Mr. Maron, your board president, the Rural Schools Conference, and it came back this afternoon, so Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday, and several of my BS colleagues and other superintendent colleagues from around the state said, "I have seen your Beakman Town interim ad everywhere," which is, which is really positive, and at this point, Mr. Donald, I believe we have nine applicants who have applied thus far, and speaking with Mrs. Jolker, many times we will have a final push the day of, the day before and the day of the closing. We also allow a day or two afterwards for any mailed applications, so as long as they're postmarked by the date. So the board has, will be receiving all that information, and then we'll talk about that a little bit later in executive session. But again, as a district superintendent, this is something that I'm available to assist with. In addition, so not only are we helping with recruiting, but then my responsibilities will be to assist the Board of Education to not only to review all the candidates, provide confidential reviews of the candidates and their qualifications, and lastly, to assist with the processing of individuals who you would like to interview and to determine your process for hiring that interim superintendent. So now let's transition to the district superintendent's role in the search process. As a district superintendent, and this is, this is a role which all district superintendents in New York State play, so there are thirty-seven of us, and I am one of thirty-seven, but all the district superintendents in New York State support their component districts in their superintendent search processes. So as the district superintendent, I assist and support the school district in not only the search process. One of the first items, and we did have to discuss that previously, is that some districts at this time not only are choosing to do the open search process, which is what we've talked about, but some superintendent searches recently have also been closed searches. The difference between the open and closed search, with the open search, you actually have the stakeholder interviews, you have public forums, generally, they're open to the public, and you have the opportunities for the community to meet the candidates, for example, on, you know, generally the second round interviews. That's different than a closed search where the posting goes out, the applicants send the information, and it's all confidential until the board, the Board of Education has concluded through their search process and actually am announcing, or are announcing the hiring of the candidate. Many times at that point, the superintendents will then have the opportunity to meet the staff and the candidate and the community as part of the process. Now, there's a big difference between the two approaches. One is much more transparent, and really we involve stakeholders and the teachers and the staff throughout the district, parents, the community, and oftentimes even students. You can see the open approach, the closed approach, and I will say there are some advantages. Reason being is that oftentimes, a superintendent or a candidate may be interested in applying, but I will share with you, if someone chooses to apply and they're a finalist, it's very public. And a superintendent who has the opportunity to be a finalist, for example, but then doesn't get the job, you then have some potential of individuals in the community and the school district saying, "Does the superintendent still want to work here?" It starts to raise a question. So just, and just providing the realistic point, in a confidential closed search, the difference is, is that if someone applied and made it to the, one of the top candidates but did not get the job, there would be no public information that was shared, and as a result, you may have some individuals who might apply, who might not otherwise for fear that they wouldn't get the job. So that's just a little difference between the two approaches. Many times, the suburban districts, especially downstate and on Mount Island, will do closed searches. They also have, and you would have the opportunity as well to work potentially with search consultants. The average price of preusing a search consultant is anywhere from $25,000 to $50,000 for a search. And the local ones in upstate New York, it's been approximately $25,000 for a search consultant to come in and do what CVS does. Downstate, it's approximately $25,000 to $50,000, and I've heard searches as high as $75,000. So with that said, we'll move forward. As part of the responsibilities as a district superintendent, we work to develop the timeline, and we'll talk about both an expedited and a year-long search. We have the opportunity to help lead, and this is something that the board will need to determine the process, but to help lead school and community forums, to help gather feedback from your school community about the qualifications that a superintendent would have and what you're looking for as a school community. So help to confirm the selection criteria, to add, to assist in the posting of the advertisements, again, similar to what we're doing with the interim, but much more extensively and more in depth. Then, we would move to identifying the qualified candidates and the applicants, reviewing the applications, maintaining the confidential files, and again, reviewing in depth with the Board of Education, the qualifications of the candidates, and giving you a confidential review of the candidates to determine who you're interested in interviewing to move forward. Next would be really structuring and leading the interviews with board and stakeholders, and lastly, assisting the board in the final selection. I'll pause for a minute. Are there any questions thus far? From the board? Okay, not seeing anyone move forward. Additionally, as the district superintendent, work with the Board of Education to really expand the district and community stakeholders. Number one, we want to confirm the board's decision-making process. Legally, the board is duly elected and has the responsibility of hiring the new superintendent. It's one of the most important responsibilities that a Board of Education can undertake. Why? Because your superintendent... Then, we would move to identifying the qualified candidates and the applicants, reviewing the applications, maintaining the confidential files, and again, reviewing in-depth with the Board of Education, the qualifications of the candidates, and giving you a confidential review of the candidates to determine who you're interested in interviewing to move forward. Next would be really structuring and leading the interviews with board and stakeholders, and lastly, assisting the board in the final selection. I'll pause for a minute. Are there any questions thus far? From the board? Okay, not seeing anyone move forward. Additionally, as a district superintendent, work with the Board of Education to really expand the district and community stakeholders. Number one, we want to confirm the board's decision-making process. Legally, the board is duly elected and has the responsibility of hiring the new superintendent. It's one of the most important responsibilities that a Board of Education can undertake. Why? Because your superintendent not only helps set the culture, but also leads your district and is really your chief executive officer. It's then the responsibility of the superintendent to keep the board informed and to work closely with you, to lead the district, but also to provide the oversight and the chief executive officer responsibilities of leading and working with all of your employees. As we move forward, establishing the process for input of key leaders in community forums, again, the board will have the opportunity to provide several different community forum feedback sessions. Prior to the advertisements going out, that would be something that we have the opportunity to discuss and really expand on a little bit. Many times, districts will choose to hold a community feedback session where they provide information about the type of superintendent that they're looking to, they'd like to see run the district. We also have the opportunity as part of that process to conduct district-wide surveys, where the board can have additional information about what are the community members, your stakeholders, your students looking for in your next superintendent. It's again additional information that the board has to work with. Again, then assisting and confirming the creation of district-wide stakeholder committees, that's plural. Some districts have chosen to have a single expansive stakeholder committee, which includes staff, administration, students, community members, and parents. Other districts, even in our region, have broken that up and had several stakeholder committees. It's a little bit more of a coordination factor during the interviews, but it does give the opportunity of the various stakeholder groups to have more input in the process as well. Moving forward, you see the stakeholder committee members who may be part of the committees, and lastly, as a district superintendent, Mrs. Jollaker and I meet in advance with all the stakeholder committee members, and we review and coordinate all the questions. We do have a process during the interviews where we actually gather the information from the stakeholder committees. We tabulate all the results, and it is important to that the stakeholder committees are not, do not, we ask not to round the candidates, meaning one, two, and three, but we ask each stakeholder committee to provide their strengths and also to provide their areas of growth. We ask for a chief spokesperson or two from each committee to then come in and meet with the Board of Education after the interviews have been conducted, where the committee as a whole has really elected these spokes individuals to come in and share what the committee's major talking points were about each candidate. We'll share that the data and the results that are tabulated from all of the interview questions provide an extensive breakdown of the tallies of each candidate, and generally, when you pull that data together and you have various stakeholder committees, you have, for example, the open forum, as well as the board's feedback from the interviews, you will have an extensive dataset that will really, many times, be consistent of who your top candidates are and who's maybe not as well received by your community and your So as we walk through, and just a couple more pages on the presentation here, it's recommended, and based on our initial conversations, my recommendation to the Beacon Town Board, and again, it's the board's search, and we're happy to work with you as you deem appropriate, that we work with the Board of Education to review all the applications and screen the candidates, that the board, in your role as the voter-approved representative leading the district, that you would then in a first round interview the qualified candidates, and generally, we've had anywheres from three to seven or eight candidates in the first round that have been screened, and the board then would meet with, you could have more, but the board would then work with those first round candidates to generally select a smaller number of candidates that would move forward in the second round, that would meet with your stakeholders, that would meet with the board a second time, and also participate in the community forums. And then lastly, there's the opportunity for the Board of Education to additionally not only conduct a third round of interviews, but also have site visits to that candidate's school districts. That's generally the process that we recommend for the board, and I am recommending that process as well to the Beacon Town Board of Education. As we move forward, and this is something from a community point of view, I think it's important to understand this process, this is not a process that happens overnight. For the board, we take our time, but we also work diligently to have a continual process, and the board will actually give feedback and approve every step in the process. With that said, we have provided two timelines. One, the traditional timeline, generally for most of the superintendent searches that we work with our component districts, are a year-long. And you see, generally, we'll work starting in the fall, holding the public forums for the superintendent qualifications, we work with the board to develop the advertisements, the board may choose to do it just for video, and so on and so forth. There's much time that we will spend in the fall together to really ensure that we have a high-quality process. Then, once the ads go out, again, the applications would be due in our timeline, and this is a proposed timeline, would be due in mid-February. We would work through the process of the review of those candidates and the interview process in March. It generally takes anywheres from two to four weeks to finalize a contract with the superintendent, and that would be, generally, the district superintendent at this point is out of the process. Once you've selected your candidate, then the candidate and your school, and would actually utilize the New York State Council School Superintendent's attorney to negotiate on their behalf, and then your board's attorney would negotiate on your behalf. And then the attorneys would actually reach an agreement that both sides are amenable to, and then you would actually announce the hiring and the appointment of the new superintendent. Generally, we have approximately a two-and-a-half, almost three months' notice. You could actually hire the individual in early April and have three full months' notice. Generally, the standard notice for our superintendents is two to three months. Okay? And then the other timeline is the expedited timeline. You'll notice we've condensed the timeline, which actually means that the board, if you're going to be working with me, we would be working together this summer to move the process forward and expedite the process, which actually would include the advertisements and community forums and the various other things that we talked about in a much more condensed manner. In this timeline, we would actually shoot to have our advertisements and all of the materials ready by mid-August. We would then move forward with the expedited timeline for the end of, towards the end of September, having the applications due. During the month of October and early November, this process would actually entail the same steps with the board conducting the first round interviews with the stakeholder committees, with the public forums, and so on and so forth, with the desired hire date and the board meeting before Christmas vacation, that last week before Christmas is what we're really anticipating, that actually would give approximately three weeks for that contract to be settled. Sometimes it takes four, but many times, those contract discussions may be settled in a week or so, if the board and the candidate are close to begin with. Again, and then moving forward, that would still allow for a two-month notice with a desired start date of approximately right after February break or early March. That would allow your potential candidate to then work with your district through the end of the school year, work with your team and your business official in this parliament, and your administrative team to develop the budget, and then move forward. I have seen successful superintendents manage both. And as an administrator during my career, this is my thirty-ninth year in education and thirty-second year as an administrator, and many times over the years as I've changed positions, and I have a few times, this is my eleventh year at CBS, however, there were a couple of times that I started mid-year. And it worked very well, but again, it works both ways, and it can be successful with the candidates. As we move forward with a couple of the other slides, just providing an overview about the superintendent advertisements, generally, not only is it important to have the board be weighing in on the type of communication and advertisements that you'd like to have, but also having feedback from your stakeholders, from your administrative team be part of this process is very important. So not only creating the brochure, creating the advertisements, the narrative of each search, and I'll pause for a quick minute and say, many of our districts throughout the region have utilized our communication service, or they've created their own, to conduct a district or to create a district video. So if I could pause for one second, I'd like to just ask a question of all the attendees. How many of you in the last week have watched a YouTube video? Just raise your hand if you could. Okay, so I'll raise my hand. So when I asked, and I asked the board the same question, how many of you have watched a YouTube video in the last week? Okay? So as you see the number of individuals that are here and yourself have watched a YouTube video, and it could be a variety of them, having a district story on YouTube or a nice video that shows the exciting things about your district, that shows the most, not only exciting, but you look at your facilities, you look at your staff, and Mrs. Campbell, who was your former middle school principal, we were discussing, I'll just have a quick pause, we talked about the board meeting, and I shared that I was so impressed, following the students' presentation, your entire room spontaneously rose to their feet and applauded your students, who did an amazing job. I said, "It was just heartwarming to see the response in the board was also as welcoming up to your students." And Mrs. Campbell and Mr. Bell both acknowledged, they said, "Beacon Town has amazing teachers and administrators, and they're so supportive of your students." To capture that in a video really tells a nice story and attracts candidates to your district and to families to say, "This is what we're so proud of, and this is why it would be really a great place to come and be our superintendent." So I'll just move forward with that, but I think you can understand the impact that that adds. Many times, those promotional videos are then used for years ahead. Why? Because it tells a story about your district, again, your high-quality achievements, your student successes, your teacher successes, your administrator successes, and all the things that you're most excited about with your district. Again, advertising both regionally, statewide, and nationally to attract qualified candidates, distribute advertisements through the DS network, through listers, consultants, also individual contacts, and lastly, to really maximize both internal and external resources, including the website, social media, videos, and community advocacy. Moving forward, just what types of superintendent search advertisements would we use? The Daily Impact Ads are a service that we belong to through and we're able to take advantage of, includes fifty-five papers across the state. The Albany Times Union, Syracuse Herald American, the Binghamton's paper, the Rochester papers, the local papers here in the North Country, and all around the state. Again, fifty-five papers statewide. We also acknowledge that the New York State School Boards Association has not only enhanced advertising packages, but again, the online ads, similar to what was used, but there is a more comprehensive package, and for example, the board would be familiar with the onboard monthly paper. There's the opportunity to have ads in that paper as well. The New York State Council, the New York State Council Grand, which is the New York State Superintendent's Association, in my opinion, as a district superintendent, but also a New York State advocate, is probably one of the most widely read and most comprehensive superintendent search vehicles in the country. It's excellent for New York State, but many times you'll also see national advertisements there as well. We have the SANEES School Administrators Association of New York State, job flash emails, that's something that we use for the interim search. There's also, and again, we've mentioned Mr. Marin would join us at the Rural Schools Association Conference, the Rural Schools Association also has a newsletter and distribution network of approximately three hundred schools across the state to put an ad, and if Beacon Town, and I think you have been in the past, a member of Rural Schools, that's actually free of charge. With Education Week, to now move to the national level, Education Week is the online and print publication nationally for education. There's also the AA-ESCA organization, which is the American Association of School Superintendents. And lastly, the electronic distribution through the superintendent's networks, through our chief school officers, through the various listers, and so on and so forth. Now, we're moving towards the end, and we've provided several sample brochures, the board actually has four of them, and we can look at these in more depth, but our communication service does an excellent job working with our boards as well as gathering ideas from stakeholders to really publicize the sample brochures for your district. There are several different models, one that most of our districts recently have been working on, because many of these distributions are electronically, is a two-page front-back brochure. So you can see, we have Serenac as the first brochure on the left, we have the Taikan Niroga brochure, and that was just last year, Serenac was several years ago, and then the superintendent's search for Peru, which was just two years ago as well. The board also has a tri-fold brochure from Plattsburgh High School, when, several years ago, when their superintendent retired and they appointed a new superintendent. So you have some samples that we can make available, again, not only for the board, but also for your stakeholders to review and give feedback on. Lastly, just as a review, we're asking the board to give us consideration to the two different timelines, and for our interim superintendent, the initial feedback that we had was that the board was interested in really leaning, or at least leaning towards the expedited timeline, so the advertisement for the interim superintendent is sixty-seven months. The individual candidates who I have spoken with, who are, who have not won, several of them who have applied already, would be interested in the shorter term, or would be willing to stay longer if the board so desired. And there are instances, and I will share, that not every time does the superintendent's search, each time, it's not always successful. The board may choose to say, "We're not satisfied with the candidates, the candidate we offered the job to has turned it down, the other candidates may not meet our need, let's go back out." And so that has happened several times over the years, and we work with the board to make sure that we're successful and we move forward with the outcome, so that the board is finally pleased with your successful candidate.
Do you find that either one of these timelines yields better results than the other?
I believe the year-long search gives more time for candidates to apply. It's been successful both ways. Okay? So you will have candidates, and if individuals are interested and have, get excited about your district, they may apply. Generally, we've had success both ways. And then lastly, this is actually detailed samples, and it just really outlines, for those of you in the audience, it's just something that the board sees, we may expand this a little bit, but it outlines the various steps in the process, you can blow it out on the website, but it actually outlines meeting with the board, determining all the advertisements, when the ads and the distribution of the advertisements begin, when the timeline would include for the board, for the first round interviews, when the stakeholder committees were, and so the expedited timeline that you see here is detailed in a little bit more manner. It also includes on the left-hand side, the various ads and what the cost would look like. Generally, it's several thousand dollars of advertisement costs, again, which would be post-eradable through the coaster, which, and Mr. Rennie, thank you, the board has joined, for both the communication service support and also for the advertisement support. And then lastly, a final discussion points, we will be asking the board, first of all, to confirm that you'd like to work with CBS and myself through the search process, and I would welcome the opportunity, second, to confirm the various steps in the process and the design, and then third, really is the follow-up discussion to ensure that the board has the feedback and gives the input so that you're pleased with the search process and its design. So we'll close it and just say, any questions at all, and I thank you for the opportunity to present this.
So in your expertise, the candidates that apply, do you have many women that apply?
Great, excellent question. So I will share with you, and for those of you in the audience, approximately seventy to- 72% of the educators in New York State are female. Only 26 to 28% of the superintendents are female. So there is definitely a difference, however, we do have, for example, several of our superintendents over the years are female and have been very, are very successful. I'll use, for example, Cynthia Ford Johnson, was the very successful superintendent in Keene for at least 16 years. Just an amazing leader, wonderful educator, from the North Country, she, for the last three years after retiring, has been the interim superintendent in Taconderoga. Tara Salati is our crown point superintendent, and doing a wonderful job, she replaced Sherry Rennick, who was in the superintendent for many years, I think approximately 15 years or so. Again, doing a great job. So our encouragement is to really encourage all candidates, diverse candidates, and I will just share with you, there's a little research out there, and for those of you in the audience who consider potentially educational leadership for the role, many times, and there is research on this, and the New York State Council of Superintendents has shared that, that many times, if there is a qualifications list of candidate qualifications, and women look at the list, these female administrators, and they'll say, well, I only have eight out of the 10, I don't think I'll apply. Statistically, men will say, hmm, I have five, let me put my name in the ring, or I have six. So there's a difference in terms of the, not the desire, but the feeling that an individual may be qualified. I will share with you both the New York State Superintendent's Association, and now NISALA, which is the New York State Women's Administrators Association, we have a newly established chapter in the North Country, for our region, and also over for FBH Bozies in St. Lawrence-Louis, specifically to encourage and really grow women leadership in administration as well. I will share many of our administrators in the region are female and doing amazing jobs, and part of the encouragement is to encourage them to move forward for the superintendent positions as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Dr. David.
Sure.
Thanks. So I understand, so these brochures, you put them together for Saranac, Taconderoga, Peru, is that accurate?
Those are, those are actually copies of their brochures, which were distributed as part of their search process.
And which, if you can recall, which, did they choose expedited or the extended process for each one?
In those cases, each of them did a year-long search.
And, sorry guys, and of those schools, how many, if you, to the extent you can remember, how many applications did they receive for each one?
It varied, it varied, and Mrs. Jalkar wasn't here for all of that. I will share with you, Scream Lake, well, let me, I'll just say, most recently, we conducted a superintendent search process in Scream Lake, and this was most recently, this, yes, it was a year-long process, I believe they had 12 applicants. They did not successfully fill it, we had a wonderful search, we had an outstanding candidate, and when the individual was offered the job, he was offered a second job at the same time, there were personal issues with parents and so on and so forth, so he actually did not accept the position. So the interim has, the interim, Dr. Brooks, has agreed to stay on, and so the board is going to be conducting another search or looking at their process in the coming year. I will share with you in several of our other searches, in Saranac, I believe we had about eight to 10 applicants, in Plattsburgh, I would say similar, Peru, Peru we only had, we had a lesser number, we had four applicants, but I will say, Peru also had an internal candidate, who is now the superintendent, and came through the process doing very, very well, and it's Mr. Storms. In Plattsburgh, Mr. LeBron is the superintendent, in Saranac, it's Mr. Perez. So we've had very successful searches, and it varies. Part of the application process is really recruitment. I believe there will be strong interest in your position, whether it's an expedited search, or it's a year-long search. I believe both locally and statewide, and potentially even nationally, you will have much interest. As you look at the work that's been done over the last 10 years, your facilities, your technology leadership, your program offerings, you have a lot to offer, we live in a beautiful area, you have a wonderful district, and I know you're proud of it, and I believe many individuals will be interested in looking at the superintendency and giving us a really strong application process.
Dr. David, do you need any decision from us tonight, or for August 8th meeting, do we need a decision from us?
So the sooner that the board can make a decision, the better. So, and I would also say, once that decision is made, and we say, this is the search that we, this is the process we'd like to undertake, we then will need to move forward with really the advertisement design and those various steps that I outlined, because if the selection is the expedited search, the mid-August is the deadline that we are laying out for the board. So that does mean that the work is going to be much more condensed.
The first school that you talked about did the one-year-long search, and they did not have a successful candidate.
Yes.
Have they decided if they're going to do an expedited next, or another year-long search?
They are looking at various options, they have an interim who's willing to stay, they actually have two interims, they had both the principal and the superintendent leave at the same time. So they had two interims, and those two interims are helping be the interim superintendent for the coming year. So there, the board will be working with me on the next process, and they've, we've already had some initial discussions about that, but they, there may be some other options that they may be looking at.
Thank you. Sir? Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. David.
Thank you so much, and thank you for the opportunity.
So I think before we give the other presentations, we should have a brief discussion, to make sure that we know what the expedited or expedited year, given the timelines, or any thoughts of people. Any particular questions? Anybody overwhelmed?
Yeah.
I mean, it sounds like there's advantages and disadvantages to both, I mean, my biggest questions are, you know, from one to the other, do you generally see, you know, better quality candidates? I mean, and if, so it's, I said, it's kind of a toss-up. But it seems like you get good quality candidates, you can get good quality candidates from either type of search. One of the biggest issues being, like you said, with Scream Lake, they did a year-long search, they've been with an interim, then that search wasn't successful, and now they're trying to figure out what they do next. You know, my question is, when you have an interim for so long, what direction does the district go in?
So I can provide a little feedback, and I'll say, as an experienced, the interim candidates that we have, for example, for Beacon Town, as well as the current interim superintendent for Scream Lake, is a very experienced superintendent. At the same time, the district's 40-year business official, has done a wonderful job all those years, and also retired. So they're, so they're having a tremendous loss of internal capacity, and as an experienced superintendent, they're really rebuilding their systems. So, and it's not the district is moving in a worse direction, they're actually refining how they're going to move forward with a very experienced superintendent who can help guide that process. So in that case, it's working very well for the district, and they have, again, collectively had a discussion about next steps and opportunities. I will share that there are occasions, and one that was very close to home, where a superintendent will announce, instead of giving a six or nine or a year month notice, may announce after Christmas, I'm going to retire in June. That happened locally with one of our districts, and the district actually advertised their superintendent's search for approximately six weeks, we worked very closely with them, and it's the Willsboro School District, where Mr. Gardner is now starting his sixth year. And I know he was a very successful high school principal and did a great job for you, but I know he's an example that there was a shortened time period, and then he moved into that position. So it works with high-quality candidates in both searches.
You've done more of these than any of us, I mean, what would your recommendation give you, given our position?
I believe that we can have a very successful expedited search. If the board, if the board as a whole feels that you want to move forward with an expedited process, I'm thrilled to work with you on it, I'm also thrilled to work with you on a year-long search. It does allow you to then have that experienced superintendent, that you, the interim candidate, to then come in, work with the board, and they become part of your school community, perhaps even adjusting and working with your administrators to develop protocols and, you know, a working relationship that may be some new directions that the board wishes to go in. I can give you one example, the Malone School District has had a very successful year-long interim process, and they've announced their superintendent, so it was a year-long search as an example. So it works both ways, I know, I had the opportunity to work, to have conversations with Mr. Marin as well, and I know he was very interested in especially ensuring that the district has the best qualified candidates, and looking at some of the national search, the national search, you know, advertising channels as well. But again, with the advertisements and the search, really will be, you know, the work that we do with the board. So I think we could have a very successful expedited search if the board wants to move forward in that search process.
And I would concur with that, from my experiences through the processes of districts. And I do know I was leading toward the expedited, these conversations previously.
So in the end, it's just the application, open process, that's the kind of difference. Everything else is still the same, they're vetted the same, questions same? Yes, they generally are, and the only difference would be a closed search process versus the open. That's what I would feel would be the more interesting factor, whether we're going to do closed or open, not the actual length of the application process, whether we give them a month and a half or six months to apply, doesn't really matter.
Now, we could make a decision on the timeline, the closed and open could be done at our August meeting, but that is also here, correct? And again, it's like everything, there's pluses and minuses from each other, the path we choose. Any other thoughts in regards to the expedited or fully year?
I do, I know my first meeting is, is obviously one that hasn't carried a great weight to the culture and tone and the multi-year effect on leadership that this person will come in and have an effect on. So one of my concerns, I guess something sticks out to me, is that expedited is timeline, is someone who's willing to accept a position that's successful in their current job, I assume well-liked and doing well, but they're willing to accept that this job to come here in the middle of their school year, I think I'm reading that correctly, versus the person that'd be willing to close out their business, probably the most active professionally possible, and then segue into this school, to this school district. So that's, as much as I would very much like to have someone in the immediate timeline, I have a sense of urgency about that, at least from a personal standpoint, I, it makes me lean towards the long-term solution to make sure you get the absolute correct individual due to the, is the proper word, heaviness of this decision, so I would lean that way to the sense that, you know, for my grain of salt.
So, Mr. Phil, go ahead. And I'll just add and say, either approach, again, can work. As a district superintendent, I would like to recommend that this is a tremendous opportunity for the board to work with your school community in either case, but to have transparent conversations about what type of superintendent do you want, to get feedback from your different stakeholders, to involve your district stakeholders in the process, and allow them the opportunity to give you feedback, to bless you. To have a community forum where your community members can come in with students and parents and listen to your potential candidates. It gives an ownership sense to your community, it's an exciting process that you can really help select your next candidate. Traditionally, the average superintendent in New York State is staying approximately three years, if you look statistically. This is my 11th, I know your last superintendent was your 10th. My encouragement is that we have a successful search either way, but that we find a candidate who's a great fit, that the board is excited about, and your community and your teachers and students are excited to move forward, your entire district with your new candidate. So that's my encouragement, and I lean towards the open search, because I think it's an opportunity to work with your district, and really identify the leader that you want, and also to advertise and be, you know, involved in the process to be able to be part of that selection, entire process.
Anybody else on the board with any thoughts? Okay, so just a quick shuffle, can we just go around, in which layer are you leaning?
Layer.
Did you say year?
I'm going with layer.
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 Expedite. I would lean toward full year. I just think it's a better opportunity, a really good job, and preparing what we're going to provide to the candidates about this district, and what makes it a special place, and what we have to offer to that candidate, because part of this is, we have to sell us to them also. I think we can do a better job if we have room on time. Can we get a follow-up with this? So I think we're barring a change in decision on August 8th, I think we're going to be full year.
Thank you.
Anybody else come through with that?
Thank you.
And I take it at that August meeting, like you said, we'll discuss open versus closed, maybe in a little bit more depth. Sounds good.
Reports, acting superintendent.
Okay, first, I'd like to thank the principal of Zayo and the high school team, did another amazing job on graduation, it was a wonderful ceremony. Once again, it's always nice to see that our students are able to select who they'd like to present their diploma, and our students' features were, it was a really nice ceremony. Also, I want to highlight Principal Nelson in the middle school, as you may have seen in the Press Republican, they had the Harvard Young Leadership Program, and about 40 students participated in that the last week in June, so a really nice opportunity that was put together for those students, and that was through our Gear Up Grant with CFES. So they worked on all different kinds of things, it looks like hands-on projects, and they looked at a lot of different skills with that, so that was great. We currently have summer school going on, a lot of students here, we have our extended school year program, we have 12 classrooms, and then we have our elementary bridge program, which we've been running for a couple of years now with seven rooms, and then middle and high school both have students coming in, middle school is like around 60, and high school, 240 approximately, students coming in either for their bridge program or regent's review, so very busy time. And we also have had some committee work towards the end of the year that will continue, we've had our multi-tiered systems of support committees, both elementary, and then we have a middle and high school committee, start that work of just updating and revising, which we want to continually do based on our data and how things are going with our students and feedback from staff. And so we're talked about different things, such as adding more intervention programs, always improving our instructional support team and how we can make changes there, and just kind of brainstorming best ways to schedule students into those intervention groups. Our social emotional learning committee is wrapping up with selecting a new SBL curriculum. It looks like we'll be going with two different programs, one for pre-K through eighth grade, and then a and then another for high school students. So that will be hopefully in place at the start of the school year. And then we will be putting together a committee meeting for our athletic and extracurricular activities. So we can look at update, any updates that are needed there and follow up on our, the previous committee meeting on things that needed to be done. And then lastly, if we want to, one of the things that we want to look at going forward, we have an opportunity to partner with Hudson Headwaters Health Network and their Healthy Smiles Program. I think this has maybe been mentioned briefly before. They're partnering with around 50 schools and they come in and they do dental care for our students at no cost to the district or to the students and families. So they would come in, do a little mini presentation with all the students, send home all the information and then as many students that wanted to participate and parents were on board, they would schedule that. They would try to see the students twice, once in the fall and once in the spring. So they'll see as, they focus on elementary, but they will see kids all the way through 12th grade and they do preventive care, sealants, fluoride treatments. They'll make referral if the kid, the student needs treatment with a dentist and they'll try to get them hooked up with long-term dental care. So that's, sounds like a really nice opportunity for our students and doesn't really appear to be any downside to that. We can get them in and they'll schedule as many days, consecutive school days as needed in order to fit in all the kids that want to participate and then they would do the same again in the spring. So if that's something we'd all like to consider, we can look at a memorandum at our next meeting.
Thank you.
I'll be short, sweet. So cafeteria is in full swing for the summer, doing free breakfast and lunches. She's got all her signs out, so please spread the word. She is hitting up all of the jump camps and town kids, but anybody is welcome to come to those free breakfast and lunches. She's also, I know we talked about it last meeting, the 30% armed table. We actually have somebody from the US Ag and Market coming in the end of this week to do analysis to see if we're going to qualify to put in the application for August 15th. So that, I'll know more come the next meeting, whether we're going to qualify for that or at least be able to put in the application for. So she's working on that as well. Buildings and grounds is probably busier than they've ever, but summer is supposed to be quiet, but it's their busy time, especially with so much, as Polly just said, all the summer school that's going on, they don't have a lot of time to get into the rooms, to clean the rooms, because the rooms are being used. So they are stretched very thin, but working very hard to get floors done and furniture back in and building shipshape first will start in September. Transportation is also in full swing because all of these children that are coming here need to be transported here as well. So they're, they're in full swing as well. So no rest for them either. And in the business office, we are getting ready for all of our audits. We have our first COVID grant audit coming up July 17th, I believe it is. It is a virtual audit to start with. So we'll be doing that. It's a half-day virtual. We'll go over everything, fill in any holes that need to be filled, that information that we're looking for. Our regular external audit will be the end of July, July 31st through the 4th of August. Our external auditors will be here. So we're in the midst of closing out all our books and opening up the new books. So again, very busy. We also, I want to mention there are some new COVID monies that are being, I don't know if anybody's seen it, but there's two different COVID grants coming out. They're very, very, very specific. One is mental health recovery grant and a learning loss recovery grant. We are looking at, we had a very long discussion yesterday at our ATM meeting, how, they're, they're very specific and there's a little nuance to these grants that we get the money, but we also have to match the money in our general fund. And all of this is new initiatives. It can't be anything that's already in existence. So if we get a new initiative, I have to be able to match it with something that coincides with that in the general fund. It's a very difficult thing when your budgets are already done to do that. So we're, there's a, there's a seminar or a webinar on this Thursday, I believe.
Yes.
That we're going to find out hopefully a little bit more about this.
With the councilly positions that we included in the budget number in addition, would those be refunded also or is that something a quick count is the match?
Well, we have to find out the other end of it. We have, we have to offer a new initiative for the grant and then match it with, so there's two, two sides. It's a, it's a little nuance that they've kicked in, makes it a little more difficult. But we threw around a lot of ideas, we're trying to figure it out and see if there's any way we can get some of this money. So we are going to attend the webinar, Shelley I believe is going to, going on as well. We are aware of it, we are looking at it and we're going to see, applications are due the middle of August. The grant is not, doesn't start till November. So again, it's a little, so if we start doing things now, it's not new. It's very odd. So we, I've got a lot of questions that, that need to be answered because our budgets are obviously already done for this year. So it makes it a little, a little difficult to figure out how we match it when our budgets are done and it doesn't start till November 1st, the grant.
So it's got to be a new program that can only start if you get the grant, right? That you also have to match.
That we have to match out of our budget that's already been done. Yeah.
Which is why I think they scheduled that Q and A.
Yeah.
A lot of districts have the same.
Yeah. So, yeah, a little odd. It's a two-year, a two-year grant and it's only for those two very specific, mental health and learning loss. That's it. There's no wiggle room, it's very, very specific.
Are the initiatives that you can implement very, like, are those initiatives very tight? Like very, very strict or, and how does that work? Is it very specific things, they're saying, hey, if you get this grant, you can implement XX or X? Like what's?
It's all new, so I don't, I mean, if it's mental health related to COVID, then yes.
Okay.
If it's learning loss related to COVID, it's a yes. But we'll find out, I'm sure. I don't know how many details we'll actually get because I don't know if it's all been ironed out because that's the way they work sometimes is they roll this stuff out and we start asking all the questions and they're like, oh, I guess you better do a little more.
And it is a competitive grant.
It is competitive.
It points depending on your free reduced lunch rate.
Free reduced lunch rates or points and yeah. So if we could apply and not, and not get it as well, it's possible because it is competitive. So just wanted to make you guys aware, we are aware of it, we are working on it, we're going to see what we can do and then we'll keep you updated. And I think that's about it.
Okay, can I ask you an easier question?
Sure.
I know some of the lunch prices, some of them include plus packs and some do not.
Only the adult ones are.
Okay. So the prepaid applies to those plus packs.
Issue. Nope, issue. Just, just the adult lunch.
Okay.
Are taxable.
Thank you. Safety committee.
Yes, absolutely. We had a meeting on the 22nd of June, very productive meeting. We talked about the possibility of working with Homeland Security to do a walkthrough through our building to assess, you know, possible needs, possible deficiencies. It was thought that it would be a better idea to work with an organization like that than to work with an organization who probably wants to sell us something, you know? So we're talking about that. We have, we're going to have a new SRO starting this fall. And there were some concerns from Cumbell and Head Elementary School about having a little bit more time for the SRO to go forward to Cumbell and Head during the day also. We also talked about, and I actually experienced it myself, scanning in large crowds. So I came in to watch my granddaughter step up from eighth grade to be a freshman and I was right at the end of the line. And I just really want to compliment Principal Nelson and staff. We got through there, there was no complaints, everybody was in on a timely manner, we all moved to go, we all felt really safe. There was a sheriff's presence, there was state police presence and the way the teachers were positioned out throughout the gymnasium, it was just a really well-run thing. So, but we had talked about probably adding a few work kiosks or, you know, so that we can make everybody identified and everybody's aligned. We also talked about the possibility, and it's going to take a lot of thought to do, of having a reunification drill at the fieldhouse. But first of all, there would be a committee of administrators and such, teachers, however you want to organize it, that would have to go to the fieldhouse itself, really walk through that building and then you would have to have a really good plan because we don't want to cause panic, any kind of havoc or anything like that. So, because we've lost the crate center, so now we're going to be using the fieldhouse. We talked quite a bit about the new PA system going in and really excited about that. It's quite an upgrade from, you know, the 1990s that we have. And with the foresight of the IT department and Mr. Lambert, they added like a lot of different, a lot more drops initially when they were putting in the older system. And so now we're able to use those for the new system and it's going to save us tremendous amount of money. And also, Mr. Lambert from IT, we've talked quite a bit about Raptor and about, you know, the possibilities of doing some expansion with Raptor, you know, for the school or different personnel. Anything you'd like to add?
I'll just add that we do have a confirmed date now from the Department of Homeland Security, so the 25th of this month, a gentleman will be coming to do the audit. And then the admin team is going to the fieldhouse on the 19th of this month, so just start that process of looking at the fieldhouse because we could have a plan for the crate center, but we need to make one for the fieldhouse. And then we do have a team going to the CDES school threat assessment training coming up on the 27th.
As far as the, and you said that was Homeland Security that's coming in to do the audit? I wrote an email up about this a couple of months back and we had talked about it at the board meeting. We had an active shooter drill. Mr. Mannix had mentioned two other potential reports that had been done about school safety, that those reports were going to be gathered up and sent to a group in Connecticut for review to see if they were, if we were following best practices. Have we ever seen any of these other reports that have been done? Has the safety committee?
No.
I wasn't unable to find anything.
Would, would it make sense to try to pull some of those reports together and kind of collect the data?
Would you be satisfied with having the reports from Homeland Security?
I mean, I mean, that's, that's obvious, I mean, that's great. I mean, I, I'm just, I'm wondering what's happened to all of this other information that we've gathered on school safety. We've had, you know, from what I understand, we've had either state troopers or border patrol came in and did something a couple of years back, we have the active shooter. I'm just wondering where that information is.
We have not seen it in the safety committee.
Not at all.
Nothing.
So I think, sorry, as far as the active shooter drill, so there was feedback given from that and I think it was handed out at safety committee meeting, but then taken back because of the information on it. And it was reviewed at that time, but I don't, it wasn't like, here's, it was a list of things to look at changing and I think the safety committee has talked about those things, like the PA system and different areas like that. But I don't think there's a formal report per se from the police or from other agencies that I've found.
You know, and also, you know, in my experience working with a past school district too, there's a big question of if you get a report and you have multiple deficiencies on that report, how much of that report do you want to get out? You know what I mean? It's, it's, it's a hot, it can be a really hot topic.
Yeah, I mean.
But it can't be a secret.
I'm just saying, I, I feel like we've had multiple groups look at this and yes, I would love to get Homeland Security's opinion on it, for sure. But I mean, right, you know, at least from my understanding, and I can go back to that email to figure out exactly what groups, I ended up going back through, listening to the board meeting again just to make sure I had it accurate in that email. I can't remember off the top of my head, but the active shooter was one. I feel that it was either border patrol or state troopers had done another. You know, it would be great to get Homeland Security's feedback, but it would be great to actually get all of this information together, compare it with Homeland Security and then figure out how we make strategic investments.
Yes, and then, just one other option too is, and I shared at the safety committee meeting, as I went to the CD summit in Albany, it was the first annual one and one of the things that, you know, there's also a whole site assessment tool that they've shared so that we can do that on our own as well, get a team of everybody together and walk through that. And they give a lot of prompts and a lot of different safety information that we kind of reviewed. So it's another option, but it would be nice if you had the names of those.
Yeah, I did send them to that email. I will look again and this is all based off of information that was, that was shared at one of the board meetings. I've never, obviously, I've never, I've never seen the reports. Because like cell phone service was a big one that came up, you know, to, to police officers and correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, so and Raptor is an app that you use on your phone? Does that require cell phone service?
Yes, if you're using it on the phone, like you use on Chromebooks, but it is, that has been a topic of conversation as far as the cell phone service outside of our building.
I mean, because I, I know the officers, the active shooter drill, I mean, that was, that was a comment I heard time and time again, is that we use our cell phones to communicate and there's no cell phone service in there.
Yes.
Patrick, try the minutes of, do we, do we have active issued December 22nd or something? Try the 11th of December. We did talk, there was a state trooper here, or a CR here at that meeting. Mr. Mannix was, was ahead of it, you know, the safety meeting and I know we talked, we did talk about something. Nothing was handed out, we spoke about it. And I'll take my minutes to, I'll take my 28th.
All right. Okay, policy committee meeting, because I'm the only member of that committee that too, so I guess I get to do that one. There's several policies that are just updates, either through internal decisions to look at the policy, several related to, I'm back here, sorry to those who do this, tidying up, cleaning up our computer network and internet policies, getting rid of some redundancies and things that weren't easy anymore, pretty straightforward. Also, same kind of thing for the regular technology, which talks about teacher technology. Updated the policy for use of district telecommunications systems. Then we had a long discussion about school admissions in regards to the question about children of retirees, whether they could, that were out district residents and whether those children could continue on. The committee is recommending that they can finish whatever school program they were in, their elementary school, those children can finish elementary school, middle school or high school. So unanimous agreement of the committee members and all the, all the people who were in the meeting. And again, everything else is just tidying up existing policies with changes that were recommended by the School Wars Association of College Schools.
John, did you get a touch in the violence reporting of any of the more aggressive violence? Was there a policy on there for that?
We did, we do have a revision to the violent disruptive incident reporting. That's again, just, I'll, you have any, you know, with this one a little bit?
Yeah, so it's kind of updating the language. It was still referring to Vader, the violent and disruptive incident reports and now that that language has changed in the regulations, so it's updated to go along with those updated regulations.
All right. So Ed's not here tonight, but I asked him back on June 19th. He was supposed to have you guys get a breakdown of student violence, student on student, student on staff, any policies or just when there are steps and procedures that we do. Ed told me 13 days ago it was added to the agenda. I do not see it on here.
I don't have that on.
As well as the rest of us, I'll add that email, I want to everybody. Have we? Have we looked into any of that? Do we know?
We have a continuous, um, data count on incidents in the school. So, we have a, a process in place for faculty to report incidents within our school tool system. And then, um, at the end of the year, like principals are now gathering that information for the state end report. But we also have a, a data sheet to track any kind of incidents like that.
Okay, so did Ed go to you asking that, that I request this for this meeting?
I do not have that now.
Oh, okay, so I am officially requesting it for the next meeting now. Alright, so that everybody knows. Uh, but like I said, I want to ask the student on student violence, student on staff violence, any policies, um, disciplinary steps and procedures, all that stuff. I got it all in the email. Me and, as well as the rest of the board members, we'll get you on that. We can, we can knock that out.
Yeah, absolutely.
Are you looking, are you looking for comparative data, like from one year to the next, or?
I'd like to see that, and I'd also like to see breakdown between, uh, you know, five oh fours, I E Ps, where our issues lie within the population of students. I think would be the best way that, and then we know where that lands, and maybe we can do something to better deal with it. I know we have a lot of issues. I don't know if anybody's got their computer up. I just got a very disturbing email you guys will read later, but. No, we can get that on the next agenda. I appreciate it.
Audit Committee. Patty?
Hi, everybody. I'm gonna apologize ahead of time because I'm working with a speech therapist for my self-policy. In some words, don't pronounce it now. Good word, but. So, we met on June twentieth. It was Jennifer, Carmen, Dave Trudeau, myself. And how do you say Jennifer's last name?
Stahl.
Stahl. So, we discussed the April and May twenty-twenty-three financial reports. We talked about total breakfasts and lunches. So, total breakfast today is one hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven breakfasts. Lunch is two hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and fifty-four. That's an increase of thirty-nine point three percent for breakfast and eleven point seven for lunches. We also spoke about the SNAP program has been reinstated. And those snacks being served resulted in two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and two snacks through this year. We did a discussion, was held on federal endemic current audit. And once we discussed that with Jennifer, we decided that we probably won't have another meeting till September. And from now on, we're gonna be two months at a time. It's a lot easier for all of us to meet, so it's not every month. We talked about summer access to the new bathroom facilities during summer activities that they have athletic field. Um, myself and Mr. Trudeau asked several questions about various aspects of the financial reports. And then, like I said, the next meeting will be done sometime in September.
Yeah, and the, just the reason why we do it in September is because we wait till our books are closed for June. And so then we'll do June and August, or June and July in September.
And then we'll set up.
Yeah, and then we'll set up the next one. But that's why we wait, because our, our books will be closed until September.
Do anyone have any questions? Krista? Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on. Resolve that the acting superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the following minutes. Motion.
Motion. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolve that the acting superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the CSE, CPSA, and five oh four recommendations dated seven eleven twenty-three. Motion.
I'm motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Discussion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Is all the acting superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education for following resolutions on this consent agenda, resignations, point on the increased rates for part-time employees, stipend, CSE, CPSA, and tenure being hereby approved, not to be amended agenda. Motion?
I'll second.
Second?
I'll second.
Chris? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We didn't miss anything off the miscellaneous. Resolve that the acting superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education for following resolutions on this consent agenda, miscellaneous initial evaluations in the summer of twenty-twenty-three, payment to attend CSE, CPSA meetings in district facilities, letter of agreement, home league contest, fingerprinting contract, network assistance condition, doubt of privacy officer, and MOA with beat account support staff being, are hereby approved. Motion.
I'll motion.
David, second? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Policies. Resolve that the acting superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the following policies. Motion?
Chris?
Chris, you. Second?
David.
David, you. Any discussion on the policies? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolve that the acting superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education for the following resolutions on this consent agenda, financial reports, donations, and Clinton County Health Department Champion Stipend be and are hereby approved. Motion. Rick? Rick? Second? Wayne? Any discussion? All those in favor? Oh, roll call, sorry.
Uh, Troy Anderson?
Aye.
Padraig Bean?
Aye.
Dwayne Bevo?
Aye.
John Fairchild?
Aye.
Christopher Gadway?
Yes.
Patty LeBlanc?
Yes.
Richard Sears?
Yes.
David Trudeau?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Are we gonna discuss the, the committees?
If there are additional items to discuss, then, yeah.
Oh, there we are again. There's a lot to discuss, board committees. Ed sent a message out to everyone suggesting that we keep with the same committee assignments as last year.
So, I handed out, um, committee grid. With what everyone was on, if it's agreed upon.
So, we've had a written form. Any questions, concerns? Yes, Patty.
Are you gonna, are you, are you still gonna be on the negotiations with many people? I'm asking for a reason because I really like you. I do.
We're supposed to have four. If you would like to do it, I, I don't have any personal preference.
Boy, I really like you a lot.
Well, you did not.
So, you'd like to pick up the?
You did not, or you just take it?
Oh, no, I'm thinking, I, I won't give up anything. I, I, I like the Audit Committee and whoever's on the Audit Committee with me. I'm retired. Whatever time you wanna set. Just discuss it anytime. Anytime is good.
So, suggested James to take me off negotiation and put Patty on there. I'm okay with that.
That, that would put you on four committees. Patty, are you okay with that? Okay.
That was a really good.
That worked out well?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that was perfect.
Any other questions on stocks?
I had some interest in the Policy Committee, but if, uh, I mean, if the, the three members that are on there want to continue on the committee, then, then I'm fine.
What time did they do the committee at nine? It's during the day, right?
Uh, no, it's generally, it's after.
It's after, about five, something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Whatever time is, yeah, whatever time is agreed on, but yeah, generally after school.
If somebody else wants a committee of nine, I'm willing to, to drop that. It's not like top.
If that's something you'd be interested in, Chris?
I don't wanna take the fourth one. Take much free time as I have. Take one. Committee at nine. It is a good one.
It is.
I, I could take the committee at nine if somebody needs to take it.
I think.
That would be good and I'll drop that.
Yeah, I think they're, alright.
Thank you.
I'll take Patty's spot on committee at nine. So, David, you ready?
Thanks, Dave.
So, just make sure I got this right. Troy is Policy Committee of Nine, Professional Development. Patrick is Committee of Nine, Professional Development. Wayne is Audit, Operations, and Negotiations. I'm on Policy and Hall of Fame. Chris is Audit, Operations, and Hall of Fame. Patty is Audit, Health and Safety, and Negotiations. Ed is on Policy and Negotiations. Rick is on Operations, Health and Safety, and Negotiations. And David is Health and Safety Committee of Nine, Hall of Fame. All of your currents on that? Great.
Thank you, Patty.
Thank you very much.
Can I just, this isn't on here, but the Athletic Extracurricular Committee, it looks like, um, Doug, right, Mr. Trudeau, you were on there, Mr. Merron was on there. You may want to discuss if somebody else would like to take Mr. Trudeau's spot.
What was the name of the committee? I'm sorry?
The Athletic Extracurricular Committee.
Ed, this, this is a question of what, what does that do? What does the Athletic Extracurricular do?
So, um, we have a handbook for coaching expectations and responsibilities, and it looks like the different, uh, any extracurricular, curricular or athletic activity reviews kind of those expectations. And, um, they put together a whole handbook and evaluation forms for coaches.
And I think right now they're kind of working with the Teachers Association to fine tune some language that we have a difference, difference of opinion on. And that's really the main task to get done relatively soon.
So, you'd like to fine tune that language before we discuss that committee? Is that?
No, no, I, I, Mr. Anderson would like to be on that committee, good, and, but that's more of a task that we have in front of us than he talked about.
So, are we getting, fine, somebody take Doug's spot?
That's what we're looking for. And I, and I would suggest if Mr. Anderson wanted that, maybe letting Patrick take the policy slot for a year. So, you're not getting four committee, so that it's a new beginning for it.
No, I was only asking for the Athletic Committee, just out of curiosity. Like many of these committees that also discover what they do.
Yep.
Uh, Policy, obviously is.
You want to stay on that?
Yeah, well, I, I think I have a fairly decent idea by what that committee does, so I think that's where I'll stick with that.
Do you think they have some, some applicable class?
No, I don't know. Well, we'll see about that.
Okay.
But, but thank you nonetheless.
I mean, look, if somebody's needing for that, I'll take it.
Thank you. We all set? Okay, uh, we're at the point for the second opportunity for public comments. Would you like to speak?
I'm Dr. Terrick, President of the Deep and Town Teachers Association. I'd like to welcome our new board members. Um, I'd like to thank Dr. Dave for his presentation on the superintendent search. Uh, I would agree with him that BTA supports an open, an open option of involving all stakeholders in the process of choosing a superintendent. There's also been discussion about a climate survey at some point. And since it appears you've chosen the year-long process, I really encourage the board to, to look at sooner rather than later. Even as soon as this summer, doing a climate survey to get some feedback. Uh, I would like to remind the board that two thought exchanges were done in the fall of last year that input from the school community was given. That might be something that wants to be reviewed as part of the process, um, of, of searching that there already has, the community has been asked for feedback of what they're looking for in the school. Two thought exchanges were done in the fall. Uh, we, we really support the idea of transparency and openness in the search for the superintendent. Thanks for your time.
Anyone else? I do not believe we have anything for executive session, do we? We do. Okay. Okay, so resolve that the Board of Education at the point has a designated point D for this. So, someone wanting, someone wanting to be the quick throw count for this? Patty? Need your motion?
I guess I'll tell you when I just do the time.
Yep.
Do I have two minutes to it?
Nope, just, just any time. Yep.
Distance learning center or?
Distance learning center.
Okay.
Motion from Wade, your second?
Second.
Second, panelists. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, this is a reminder of the reasons we are. Oh, we gotta do. No more, guys, sorry. Resolve that the Board of Education, there is exercise, session, discuss mannerably the appointment and employment of a particular person. Motion?
Motion.
Second?
David.
David? Discussion? Any call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.